Special meeting of the Hoyoke City Council called by Mayor Garcia. We are hybrid this evening with some of our members on Zoom. So just before we do a roll, let's do a roll call first and find out where everybody is. Roll call, we'll call your name, let me know if you're here. Councilor Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Councilor Bartley?
Here.
Councilor Givner?
Here.
Councilor Jordan?
Here.
Councilor Maldonado Velez?
Here.
Councilor McGee?
I'm here.
Councilor McGivern, here. Councilor Murphy Ramboletti?
Here.
Councilor Powell?
Here.
Councilor Israel Rivera?
Here.
Thank you. Councilor Jenny Rivera?
Here.
And Councilor Tomlin?
Here.
Councilor Bacon?
Here.
That's unanimous with, it sounds like, four members via Zoom. So let's, I'll stand please for a pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the city of Hoyoke and the city council.
Because we are hybrid, the chair will read and entertain a motion to take all roll, a roll call vote for purposes of this meeting would be applicable to all motions to receive, refer items to committee, remove items from the table, place items on the table, package items together, or suspend the rules unless there is an objection.
Second.
On that motion, all those in favor, any opposed? That means, except for final votes, we will do, we are required to do a roll call vote and everything, but we can take that motion up front and avoid a roll call on miscellaneous motions, but on final votes, we would be taking a roll call vote.
Mr. President, I make a motion to take 1, 2, 3, and 4 off the table and pack them together and send them to finance.
Second.
This is, this is, just real quick, this is a special meeting called by Mayor Garcia. We are on Zoom, we are being recorded, we are being, interpretation is being provided. We are also on the live access channel and, of course, we are here in person. And because it's the mayor's meeting, we go by the mayor's agenda and the mayor's agenda only. What's that?
Got it, yeah.
Oh, I apologize, the president and the city council called the meeting, but same thing, we can only go by the agenda that's put in front of us. Councilor McGee is, I'm, oh, by the way, I'm filling in for Councilor McGee only because he's on Zoom and he's right now got some spotty reception.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules, have Councilor McGivern stand in for Councilor McGee.
Second.
Second.
Motion, all, all those in favor, any opposed, so moved. You could've said no.
No chance.
Now I'll recognize Councilor Bartley's motion to take items 1, 2, and 3 from the table and refer to committee on finance. Item 1 is from Mayor Garcia, it's a supplemental budget, everybody's received a copy, both electronically, I believe there's a copy on your desk now with some instructions. There's also a executive summary for the supplemental budget by Mayor Garcia, we thank him, and there is also from Mayor Garcia, proposal for Ezekiel's plan known as Operation Safe Streets. Is there any discussion on referring to the committee on finance? If not, all those in favor, any opposed? The committee on finance is scheduled to meet on...
Can I just have a copy of Ezekiel's plan sent to public safety? Do we have a copy of it?
No problem, yep. Copy of item number 3 to public safety.
I'll make a motion to amend and to send it to public, a copy to public safety.
Okay. Motion has now been amended to refer items 1, 2, 3 to committee on finance with an amendment that we also refer a copy of item 3 to public safety. Finances meeting on November 15th. This review of a supplemental budget depends, but could take two to three hours. We will go through the line items, both the additions and the reductions. Mayor Garcia, thanks to our administrative assistant, has informed all department heads that have an addition or a reduction in their budget to be present to answer our questions. There's some important conceptual things, or there's some important things that I think we all have to, to understand and be able to agree, disagree with the supplemental budget. I talked to the assessors earlier this week, they were still waiting to have the munis glitch fixed. I'm informed, just, just before the meeting, and I believe that is fixed, I believe the numbers are now going to be submitted to be certified, which will open up the door for us to set a final tax rate sometime in December. So with that in mind, is there any further discussion on items 1, 2, and 3? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved. Item 4 from Attorney Bissonnet.
And item number 5 as well?
And motion made, second to take item 4 and 5 as a package. Item 4 is from Attorney Bissonnet, the Assistant City Solicitor Memo of the Optional Municipal Administrative Act, Master General Laws 43C.
And 6, by the way.
Item 5 is ordered that, under Councilor McGee, that the city of Hoyoke accepts and adopts the provisions of Master General, Chapter 40 through, 43C, optional forms of municipal government. And item 6 introduced under my name and pursuant to chapter through section 12, Master General Laws 43C, the city of Hoyoke acting in and through the city council, provided the state statute subject to implementation by city ordinance and approved within an effective date no later than December 31st, 2025. The motion is to receive 4, 5, and 6?
Ordinance.
And refer to committee on ordinance, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
Motion 7, uh, agenda 7, take off the table, and then 2 motions, receive.
Motion made, second to receive item 7. What is all this? No, no, where's the hard cut? Where the hard cuts? What is, what is time? This is a, CPA committee is referring to us, something that I'm pretty sure we're all familiar with, the posterior restoration project. The scope of work, I believe, has been amended. I haven't really had a chance to look at this, so I suggest that we just put it in committee on finance to take a quick review.
Motion to, sent to committee on finance.
Motion made, second, we take item 7, refer to committee on finance. Councilor Jordan?
Yes, after this, I did want to ask if anybody wanted to have public comment tonight, I wanted to see if we could suspend the rules to allow public comment.
You don't...
If that's allowed.
And that, you know, it's, it's always something we question, not, not public comment, but it's always something we question about these special meetings and, you know, the, I don't know if it's a rule that says only the mayor, I think the mayor's special meeting is by charter, and I think the president's is by, by ordinance, and it's only the president or the mayor that can set the agenda.
Okay.
I mean, I'm willing to do whatever the body wants, but that's just my interpretation.
Maybe, since this is the president's meeting, I might be too late now to add it.
I don't think we usually do, Kev. I don't think we usually have it.
All right. I just, I think there was certain citizens that had come, maybe with the hope that they were going to be allowed, but that's okay, if they can't, we can't.
I, um, we'll get an interpret, we'll get a ruling on it, but, um, right now, the way I understand it, that we can't, I apologize if anybody was looking for public comment, but this is a special meeting because we couldn't have a meeting on election night and...
Right.
That's probably the only reason we're having a special meeting.
Right.
To get some of this stuff into committee so we can work on it.
Okay, very good.
So 7 is refer to finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved. Item 8. This is committee reports, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, committee on ordinance, to whom is referred an order, petition of Amy Matos, a street vendor application 3680, 63 Main Street, recommend it be given leave to withdraw.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the committee made this recommendation because the petitioner is no longer seeking a different location as listed. Thank you.
I'll second the motion, so.
So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and give the order leave to withdraw.
Any further, motion is to receive and adopt the committee report that the order be given leave to draw, to withdraw, as stated by Councilor Bacon, Chair of the Ordinance Committee, is there any discussion? On that motion, I'll, I think we have to do a roll call, right? Okay, we're gonna do a roll call.
You got a roll call sheet or...
I got a roll call sheet, I just don't know how we, do we go out of order, do we pull out of the can?
We didn't select, by the way, we didn't do the can for the...
Just go in alphabetical.
No, we just go in order.
All right.
Alphabetical? Okay, without, if there's no objection, we'll go alphabetical.
Well, that's Bartley.
So this is to adapt the committee report, Councilor Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Councilor Bartley?
Yes.
Councilor Givner?
Yes.
Councilor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilor Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Councilor McGee?
Yes.
Councilor McGivern, yes. Councilor Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Councilor Powell?
Yes.
Councilor Israel Rivera? Councilor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Tomlin?
Yes.
Councilor Bacon?
Yes.
12 VAs and one absent. Motion carries. Item number 9, the committee on ordinance, to whom is referred an order under a special permit application of Blossom Flower LLC at One Cabot Street for cannabis third-party transporter license, recommend the permit, special permit be granted.
Thank you. So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and grant the special permit, and I would just like to note that Damaris Sapanti has been before us on a number of other special permits, and she came in to amend and to add this other transport component that will help to save money and build efficiency at the site. And so, she's a Goodward Five business owner, and the committee's recommending this unanimously.
Is there any discussion? Councilor Bartley?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure we're all gonna vote for it, but speaking in favor, not only that, but just as a gentle reminder, just the important work that we did to get One Cabot, not with a $10,000 steal, we almost had it eight years ago, but with a genuine investor who's developed that building, and now it is really a terrific, ongoing concern with a lot of small businesses and larger businesses in there. So the city did very well, the investor did very well, and the city continues to do well because of the commercial taxes that are, that accrued from a building that is 300,000-plus square feet and was a white elephant, and now it is a successful entity in the city on the bridge coming from Chickaby. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, on the motion to grant the special permit to adopt, clerk will call, the clerk will call the roll, I'll call the roll. Councilor Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Councilor Bartley?
Yes.
Councilor Givner?
Yes.
Councilor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilor Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Councilor McGee?
Yes.
Councilor McGivern, yes. Councilor Murphy Ramboletti?
Out of the room.
Councilor Powell?
Yes.
Councilor Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Okay. Izzy, we missed you on the last vote, I don't know if you were muted. Councilor Jenny Rivera?
I lost signal.
Yes.
I'm actually at a fundraiser for my job, but I gotta, you know, when we do emergency meetings like this, I gotta do what I gotta do.
You're, you're fine. Counselor Jenny Rivera, sorry.
Yes.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yes.
Again, 12, 12, 12 VAs and one, one temporarily out of the room.
Gotcha.
Counselor Bacon, yes.
And abstained. Counselor Murphy Ramboletti?
One devoted yes, by the way.
Yes.
Did I? I did not, I'm sorry, Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Gotcha. Motion carries. Item 10, committee on ordinance, to whom is referred an order, handicap sign be placed in front of 541 and a half...
54 and a half.
54 and a half Davis Street for Angel Luis Vasquez Natale, placard number PL 5800106, recommend the order be adopted.
So I'd like to make a motion to receive the committee report, adopt and pass the first reading.
Second.
Motion made, second to receive the committee report to adopt and pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you. This request came in and it was reviewed by the Disabilities Commission, which recommended that it be adopted.
Any further discussion? Counselor Bartley?
This is in war three, and I really want to thank the ordinance committee and Disability Commission, because this has been pending for more than a minute or two, but it's, it's really needed for this particular individual, so I appreciate everyone's support.
Any further discussion? Motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion made, second to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion made, second to pass it be ordained, if there's no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll. If you say yes, you're voting in favor of the ordinance, if you say no, you're voting to deny it. Councilor Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Councilor Bartley?
Yes.
Councilor Givner?
Yes.
Councilor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilor Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Councilor McGee?
Yes.
Councilor McGivern, yes. Councilor Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Councilor Powell?
Yes.
Councilor Izzy Rivera?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
By your vote, you've adopted the committee report and for the handicap placard at 54 and a half Davis Street. Item number 11, committee on ordinance, to whom is referred an order, handicap sign be placed at 584 South Summer Street for Alfredo Lorenzi, placard number PL 2230484. Have considered the same, recommend it be adopted.
Motion to receive the committee report and adopt and pass the first reading.
Motion made, second, receives the committee report, adopt and pass the first reading, Counselor Bacon.
This again is a routine request that was reviewed by the Disabilities Commission and again recommended for approval.
Any further discussion? Pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion made, second to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion made, second to pass it be ordained, if there's no further discussion, clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the handicap placard, if you vote no, you're voting to deny. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Councilor Bartley?
Yes.
Councilor Givner?
Yes.
Councilor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilor Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Councilor McGee?
Maybe. Is there?
Councilor McGee? We'll come back to you. Councilor McGivern, yes. Councilor Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Councilor Powell?
Yes.
Councilor Israel Rivera?
He did a...
Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Councilor McGee, you still with us?
Package 12 and 13.
All right, well, I think we're good for, for now. We'll check later if we need to. By your vote, you've adopted the committee report and passed...
I'm back, I'm back.
Okay. It's a handicap placard at 584 South Summer Street.
Yes.
Fair and ain't. Thank you.
Close that? Yeah, okay.
Handicap placard, committee recommendation to adopt a handicap placard for 584 Summer Street, number, item number 11.
Yes.
Thank you. It did pass. Item number 12, introduced by the committee on ordinance, to whom is referred an order for two handicap parking spots to be installed at the new park, Kennedy Field. Have considered the same, recommend it be adopted. Counselor Bacon, Jordan, Givner, Israel Rivera, you are signing off on this, right? And Councilor Maldonado, Maldonado Velez signed off. Sorry.
Yes.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
I'm signing off, if you can hear me.
Pass the first reading.
We hear you.
Yep.
We can hear you. Sorry, Counselor Bacon.
Motion to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
Motion made, second to receive, adopt the committee report, pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
This was a regular, well, it wasn't regular, it was to provide some handicap parking at the park, and so engineer determined the best spots and the committee recommended to add them.
Any further discussion? If not, pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion made, second to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion made, second to pass it be ordained, if there's no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the committee report, if you vote no, you're voting to deny. Councilor Anderson Burgos votes yes.
Yes.
Councilor Bartley?
Nostradamus over there. Yes.
Councilor Givner?
Yes.
Councilor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilor Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Councilor McGee?
Yes.
Councilor McGivern, yes. Councilor Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Councilor Powell?
Yes.
Councilor Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Tomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Vote is unanimous, the committee report passes. Item 13, committee on ordinance, to whom is referred an order to remove a handicap parking sign from 60 Northeast Street, the person has moved, have it considered the same and recommend it be adopted.
So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
Motion made, second to receive and adopt the committee report, passing the first reading.
Self-explanatory.
On the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion made, second to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion made, second to pass it be ordained, if there's no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the committee report, if you vote no, you're voting to deny it. Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Councilor Bartley?
Yes.
Councilor Givner?
Yes.
Councilor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilor Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Councilor McGee?
Yes.
Councilor McGivern, yes. Councilor Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Councilor Powell?
Yes.
Councilor Israel Rivera?
Yeah.
Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, the committee report passes, the handicap placard sign ordinance will be removed. Item 14, committee on ordinance, to whom is referred an order to establish Hoyoke Food Coalition by city ordinance, have it considered the same, recommend it be adopted.
So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and pass the first reading.
Motion made, second to receive, adopt the committee report to pass the first reading, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. This order was in committee for a long time, and it went back and forth, first it was indicated we needed an ordinance, then we didn't, and so it became a bit of a bouncing ball, and at the end of the day, it was found to be the best idea to create an ordinance, and the committee did the work of carving out a good membership for the committee and the role of this particular coalition. I believe Counselor Maldonado Velez was the maker of the order, if he wishes to add to the summary?
Counselor Maldonado Velez?
Thank you, Counselor Bacon, um, yeah, um, you got the, you got the report right, it did go back and forth a little bit, um, this was one of the first orders I filed with Councilor Anderson Burgos that I put in this term, and I'm glad that we are finally gonna pass it through, because Hoyoke definitely needs a committee like this to really work on the food justice in our community. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion made, second to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion made, second to pass it be ordained, if there's no further discussion, the clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the Food Coalition, if you vote no, you're voting to deny. Councilor Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Councilor Bartley?
Yes.
Councilor Givner?
Yes.
Councilor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilor Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Councilor McGee?
Yes.
Councilor McGivern, yes. Councilor Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Councilor Powell?
Yes.
Councilor Israel Rivera?
Yeah.
Councilor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Tomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Unanimous vote, the committee report passes. Item 15, committee on ordinance, to whom is referred an order, a zone change application from DR to BC for Jose Almonte, this is for 549, 551 South Bridge Street to rebuild a convenience store following a recent fire, have it considered the same, recommend that the zone change be granted.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report and grant the zone change.
Motion made, second to receive, adopt the committee report and grant the zone change, under discussion, Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we held the public hearing jointly with the planning board, as has been our practice for the last couple of years, and in this particular public hearing, we had a fairly large attendance by the neighbors and the abutters relative to this. It was pointed out during the public hearing process that this is a spot zone, there are certain situations under which a spot zone makes sense in a certain neighborhood, under certain circumstances, and the ordinance committee, considering all of the testimony and all of the input of the public hearings, voted unanimously to grant the zone change.
Is there any further discussion? I'd like to, to thank the ordinance committee for a well-done job on this public hearing and, and the, you know, both, you know, working with the planning board, but working with the public and understanding the, the law itself, it's incredible the work you did, we appreciate, I appreciate it. If there's no further discussion, the motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
For a zone change?
Okay, motion to pass the second reading.
It's an ordinance change, zone is ordinance, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion made, second to pass the second reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved.
And motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion made, second to pass it be ordained, if there's no further discussion, I'll call the roll. A yes vote is a favor in the zone change application, a no vote is to deny the zone change. Councilor Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Councilor Bartley?
Yes.
Councilor Givner?
Yes.
Councilor Jordan?
Yes.
Councilor Maldonado Velez?
Yes.
Councilor McGee?
Yes.
Councilor McGivern, yes. Councilor Murphy Ramboletti?
Yes.
Councilor Powell?
Yes.
Councilor Israel Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Councilor Tomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
By unanimous vote, the zone change is granted. I'm gonna ask Counselor Tomlin just to take over up here, certainly well-versed in being up here, and I'll do the finance committee reports from the, from my chair.
And I'll just make a motion to suspend the rules and allow Pete to take over, Chairman.
Um, we, you can, we'll suspend the rules, but actually, the rule says...
We don't need it, Joe?
Once it's suspended, the person up here can switch.
You have all that power?
Yes. And my knees are killing me, that's a real reason.
I'll tie to that, this is, this is a surprise. Might be my last time up here. Might be my last time up here. Hello everybody at home in Hoyoke?
Hi, Mom.
Okay, uh, we, um,
Number sixteen.
Number sixteen. What are you, ready? Uh, committee on finance, to whom was referred an order that in ordinance, in accordance with M G L Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, the city council hereby accept the provisions of the fiscal year twenty-three B J A Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Other Substance Abuse Grant Program, one million dollar no-match grant, and authorizes the except, establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of said grant. Have considered the same and recommend that the order be adopted. Counselor McGivern.
Make a motion to receive, pass the first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. The, uh, the committee on finance did meet, uh, we met with our, our chief of, uh, of the police department. And, uh, this is a three-year grant. This is a, a grant that is known as a grant that comes to the city, and parts of it is funded into, uh, partners, uh, within the city to, uh, to take use and, and make use of the, uh, the grant itself. As Counselor Tomlin said, it's a thousand dollars with, uh, no, no match whatsoever.
Million dollars.
A million dollars with no match, that's maybe much better. Um, the Hoyoke Police Department will be using two hundred and seventeen dollars of this. Uh, they will continue to keep the office open on Ray Street with the opioid, uh, uh, task force, so to speak, of, uh, which are, are trying to work with, uh, individuals, uh, within our community who have substance abuse issues and, and trying to help them out and get them into needed, refer them or direct them towards, uh, needed services. Uh, of the three remaining partners, uh, C H D, Gondara, and U Mass will be, uh, working with the, uh, with the remainder of the grant. Uh, C H, C H D will use, uh, the money for three employees that work at Ray Street, that the, uh, police department brings, uh, people down that, you know, do have substance abuse issues, uh, to, uh, to work with the, uh, with the employees at Ray Street itself. Uh, Gondara is gonna have a new, a second, or a new recovery coach, or a recovery coach now at Hoyoke, Hoyoke Medical, Hoyoke Hospital. Uh, recovery coaches are specialty of Gondara, they work very well. Uh, they're individuals who are in recovery themselves, but they can speak the language and they have good, uh, success talking to people who are fighting, uh, addiction, fighting substance abuse. And, uh, U Mass is going to use it for, I have no idea. Anybody remember exact?
Counselor Jordan.
I think, I think the chief told us, U Mass is, it's a small portion of the grant, but they're gonna, they're gonna use it for, uh, some type of, it's not a study, but some type of analysis of, uh, statistics that are going on and provide us, uh, provide us with a report. But that's the gist of it, the committee recommends that we accept the grant. Uh, we did ask the auditor that, you know, and then the chief, that, you know, is there monitoring of the money that is dished out to or three partners? And they do have to submit invoices, and they do have to, uh, document and verify how they spend the money. And of course, that's not just by the, uh, the auditor, it's also by the chief and also by the state. So the committee does recommend that we accept the grant.
Okay, motion to pass the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Bartley's got a
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, and it's also by ordinance too, that they've got a report to us. So hopefully with three-year grant, we get annual reports on
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good point, thank you, Counselor Bartley.
Thank you, Joe.
Pass the second reading.
Well, second.
All in favor?
Hey, how many chairs we have here?
Okay. He's just calling it, 'cause I usually call the
He made a motion. We, we'll call on this one if we could.
Yeah, we do.
Izzy has his hand up.
Okay, coun, uh, Counsel Rivera.
Nah, I think Counselor Bartley addressed what I was gonna say, which is regarding, uh, a, a possible report to be, to get back, uh, brought back to the council or to at least public safety, so we could see how many people they're servicing and how effective, uh, the dollars are being put at use. There's a lot of resources in the community, but we don't really know what the data is putting out after the fact. But thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Pete?
Counselor Bartley.
I just wanna follow up on Counsel Rivera's comment. Yeah, I, I think that's actually a wise idea, because, I mean, first off, it's set by ordinance, so we, we, we know that. But to get an annual report and to have it go to a specific committee to review it, in this case, public safety would make sense. I hope that's something that, uh, that is administratively taken care of. Thank you.
Okay, it'll be a roll call.
Yes.
Anderson, Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Gibner.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Maldonado Velez.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti.
Yes.
Puelo.
Yes.
Izzy Rivera.
Yeah.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Bacon.
Yes.
Thir, uh, thirteen ayes, it passes. Uh, the grant is, uh, accepted, provisions. Item number seventeen. Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that in accordance with M G L Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, the city council hereby accepts the provisions of the fiscal year twenty-three B J A Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grants Program, forty thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars no-match grant, and authorizes the establishment of a fund or other meth, method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of said grant. Have considered the same and recommend that the order be adopted. Counselor McGivern.
Make a motion to, uh, receive and, uh, pass the first reading.
All in favor?
Thank you, um, the, uh, the committee on finance met with the chief on this grant also, Chief Pratt. Uh, this grant is, is no stranger to the city of Hoyoke. We've been receiving these grants now for probably a good, uh, decade and a half, maybe two decades. Uh, these grants, uh, come through the Justice Department. They're allowed mostly for the purchasing of equipment for the, uh, for the police department, and it's been well-used over the years. The proposal for this grant is eighteen vests. As we know, we have a number of new police officers coming on duty, and vests have a, only a life, lifespan of maybe five years, if, uh, at most. And, uh, these vests are needed by, by the officers. Um, there's also gonna be two, uh, computers, uh, that are gonna be purchased for the I T department within the, uh, police department itself. A label printer with, uh, for the purposes of barcode and for the purposes of, uh, some of the, uh, some of the analysis work that the police department does, and they need the, uh, need, you know, a new label printer itself. With all said, after talking to the chief, the finance committee recommends we accept the, uh, grant and provisions.
Thank you, Counselor, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to pass this. Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll, roll call if you could.
Roll call, yep. Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Gibner.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Maldonado Velez.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti.
Yes.
Puelo.
Yes.
Izzy Rivera.
Yeah.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Bacon, yes. By your vote, we have passed, uh, accepted that, uh, grant. Okay, item, item number eighteen, uh, this could be a little bit of a
Motion to waive the reading.
Yeah, give us a suspended
Abbreviated reading.
Thank you.
How do you abbreviate this? I mean, I'll do my best.
It's a, it's a bond for twelve point seven million to do the
You've been doing this for twenty-four years, you know how to do it.
Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that the city appropriate the amount of twelve million seven hundred eight thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars for the purpose of paying the cost of the construction of, at the, uh, Lawrence School for Windows and Doors, uh, McMahon School for Windows and Door Replacement, Morris Dunne for partial window and door replacement, and the William Dean for Boiler Replacement Project. There you go. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you. The, uh, committee on finance, uh, met with, uh, Anthony Soto, Superintendent of, uh, Schools. Uh, their new business manager, Sean, and I, I forgot Sean's last name, and I didn't write it down, but he was, uh, very, very articulate, and seems like he's a great addition.
Mr. Sheedy, Sean Sheedy.
Sheedy, thank you. He's, sounds like a great addition to the school department, uh, administration itself. Mayor Garcia was present, and our treasurer Rory Casey was present also. This is a, a proposal and, and a M S B A grant, uh, unlike school building projects. This is a grant where whatever we end up having to pay for a borrow, we do get, um, up to eighty percent, uh, reimbursed for everything that's, that's eligible. We also learned that the, the, uh, school department has put in and will use some of the esser monies that they have in, uh, within their, uh, their budget, uh, within their reach revenues, and, uh, the superintendent told it that they earmarked out two million dollars, uh, for this purpose. Uh, the city share, you know, the borrowing would be three point two million. There's a five percent contingency built into this. Uh, typically in these projects, the contingency is, is not needed, but it is required, and you never uh, with the building materials and things in class and construction that are going up, you're, you never know when something might, uh, come in a little bit higher. But as, as stated, as Counselor Tomlin, uh, read, these are much-worthy projects in four of our schools, uh, which include, uh, windows, uh, doors, and, uh, one school is, uh, actually gonna be, uh, the, uh, the boiler's gonna be replaced itself. But the, uh, we, we have a estimate, estimated cost for each of the schools. We reviewed that in committee with, uh, with the superintendent. We reviewed the finances, um, there's a possibility, and I think it was Counselor Jordan that brought it up, I won't steal his thunder, that you may be able to fund some of this without borrowing, which would be a, would be a big plus. But the committee does recommend that we, we have to take the vote, or the M S B A cannot go forward with, uh, with, uh, giving us the, uh, the grant itself. So the committee recommends that we adopt and be in favor of this.
Thank you, I just wanna make a correction, that person I mentioned was worked for the city is Mr. Sheedy, but the, the finance director was Sean Mangano.
Thank you, 'cause I knew Sheedy didn't sound right.
No, I'm thinking Sean's
Sean, we're sorry if you're listening.
Yeah, but, um, that's my error, but, uh,
My, my apologies, I know when I should've wrote his name down.
Uh, we, uh, pass the first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Under discussion? Counselor, Counselor Jordan.
Under second reading, or? I'll make a motion to pass the second reading.
All in favor?
Second.
Oh, okay.
No, under discussion.
Discussion.
Um, just a couple points. One is, this is a wonderful opportunity here for the city of Hoyoke to make these improvements, and we're getting effectively ninety percent reimbursement from the state. Because with us getting all but three point two million of the twelve point seven million paid, then they're allowing us now to use two million of our state esser monies that we're getting. Now the city is only gonna have local responsibility for one point two million dollars. That is fantastic for the city of Hoyoke, that is gonna be tremendous relief for us. It also goes hand in hand with the good news that we got about the twelve million-ish that we're gonna save on the new middle school project under the, uh, the, the formula. So we got a couple things here, really rolling our way on making some massive improvements to, uh, school capital. So really excited to support, uh, to support this. Um, I think this is gonna go a long way to, uh, you know, giving these buildings a, a tremendous facelift. I will say that I know the finance committee, uh, we mentioned the fact that if we don't have to bond for the, uh, you know, we should obviously vote to approve this, but this doesn't mean that they have to go out and bond, right? So there might be a mix of what we ultimately do. So if we have the cash flow, uh, to do it and/or dip into our savings a bit, we could touch into that one point two million and save the city some interest costs, uh, which, as we all know, interest rates keep going up. So this is a good opportunity for the city also to save some, some funds if we can do that. So would certainly encourage some portion of that. Um, but, uh, very, very pleased to, to vote for this, and, uh, this is gonna be great for the city.
Thank you, Counselor Bartley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just wanna, uh, obviously, what, what Kevin said, I, that's, makes a lot of sense. I just wanna point out one other thing, uh, I haven't been up to the Morris A. Dunne. Morris, yeah, Morris Dunne is obviously a legendary Hoyoke name. The, the condition of the, uh, of the sign at the Morris A. Dunne School, I mean, maybe through the chair, to the chair of the, um, school committee, the, uh, the sign is, the paint's peeling off for all the letters in Mr. Dunne's name. The sign is ancient, it gets hammered by the sun. You know, maybe somebody from the school department could take a look at it and maybe put up something more appropriate to honor one of Hoyoke's greatest, uh, legends. It's, uh, it's really in a pitiful state. So I'm hopeful that with the money that Kevin just mentioned that we're supposedly saving, and maybe there could be, uh, you know, ten thousand dollars somewhere for, uh, for better signage, especially in light of the, uh, person for whom that's named. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bacon.
I'm all set, Counselor Bartley, by mentioning Dunne School. I just wanted to be sure, anybody watching knew both McMahon and Dunne were getting some of the windows. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we pass the second reading, all in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call on this one.
Okay, uh, Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Gibner.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Maldonado Velez.
Yes.
McGee.
Yes.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti.
Yes.
Puelo.
Yes.
Izzy Rivera.
Yeah.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Bacon.
Yes.
By your vote, you have set to bond for the schools. Item number nineteen.
Make a motion to receive, uh, take off the table and pass the first reading.
Second.
Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that hereby, that there be and is hereby appropriated by transfer in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, three hundred thousand dollars. From patrolman, three hundred thousand, to overtime, three hundred thousand. Have considered the same and recommended that the order be adopted. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mr. President. Um, we had Chief Pratt before the finance committee to, uh, discuss the transfer and to get an update on where we are, uh, with overtime. This is the overtime, uh, primarily for operations, uh, there's a second overtime line item for, for court, uh, operations itself. Um, just a couple of quick, uh, things, the three hundred thousand dollars will get the, uh, police department into the next few pay periods into the calendar year. Uh, we've been doing this periodically to, uh, get status updates on where, where overtime is. Um, some good news, some bad news. Uh, we, of the new officers that were coming in, um, two officers that were in the academy left the department. I, I think they left for other, uh, other departments, but we lost two and four, um, four failed academically in the, uh, in the academy itself. Uh, they can regroup and, uh, get back in, but right now they cannot be, uh, taken into the, uh, into the ranks itself. Um, there are still three, I'm sorry, four more in the academy. Hopefully, they'll be getting out, uh, fairly soon and be able to, uh, assume the patrol officer's position, uh, within the department itself. The payroll overtimes, running about fifty-five thousand dollars, that's up from, uh, last year, but the chief did note the tragic homicide investigation itself resulted in ten thousand dollars of, uh, overtime during the, uh, the last pay period, couple pay periods itself. Um, we do have, uh, we do have a number of, uh, of, uh, officer slots to fill, but not as many as we had the last, uh, the last two or three years. Uh, the ordinance clause for ninety-one officers, the budget, I believe, when we, you know, we haven't passed it completely yet, but we haven't balanced it. The budget was up to, uh, funded up to, uh, eighty-eight officers, I believe, the last we checked during the hearings. We have transferred some money in, transferred some money out, but that's where we are. Uh, we thanked the chief for the presentation, he's kept us up to date as we've asked, and the committee, uh, recommends that we adopt the, uh, the transfer.
Uh, Counselor Israel Rivera.
Uh, thank you, uh, my question is around the new officers. Are they giving them a training before they actually throw them, uh, put them on the streets? Um, 'cause I think during the audit, what came out was that they don't actually have a on-the-street training, they just throw them straight on the street. And I think, for me, that's something that's important to kinda like address. Um, thank you.
Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, I, I can partially redress, address that, Counsel Rivera. Um, the, oftentimes, and I'm not sure about each of these individual officers, but oftentimes, um, officers, uh, join as a reserve officer first, and it's, it's an ongoing training until they, they get in, until the academy opens up, and then they're placed into the academy. The, uh, there's, there's ongoing training when they're reserve officers, where they can pu, uh, perform certain duties, and then the academy is both the academic and the, uh, the P T training itself, and, and, and a lot more than, more than just that. So there, there is, I, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what the audit is referring to, but I would defer any other questions to the chief for, uh, more elaborate answers.
Any further questions?
Not a question, just a clarification, um, so with regards to the, um, the auxiliary, yeah, if, if that was the system in place, that would be awesome. I think ideally that would be great, I don't, don't think that's what's been happening though. So that's why my question came up, and I think that's what came up in the audit. Um, especially with the part of the accreditedness. So that's the thing to me, is like, um, that's one of the most important things for us in the plate, and we actually have not addressed that. and we actually have not addressed that. So I kind of wanted to highlight that and put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
On the motion, pass the first reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion made second to pass. Made second. Motion passed the second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call. Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Givner.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Mel Delano Villas. He's okay. McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy Ramboletti.
Yes.
Puelo.
Yes.
Izzy Rivera. Is he there?
Yes.
Okay. Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Tallman, yes. Bacon.
Yes.
Twelve ayes and one nay. By your vote, you have passed the transfer. Now, one absent. So 11, 11 ayes, one nay, and one absent.
Make a motion to take item 19 off the table and pass the first reading. I'm sorry.
That was nine, 20.
20.
Second.
Item number 20, the Committee in Finance to whom was referred in order that there be and is hereby appropriated by transfer in the fiscal year 2024, $256,000 from capital stabilization to capital outlay, HPD other equipment, $256,000 surveillance equipment. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, we had Chief Pratt before the committee. This is capital stabilization is something that under Mayor Garcia was established and has been a great asset to being able to cover the class for capital outlay equipment and stuff throughout the year. And it's been very helpful, and I can't speak enough in favor of what Mayor Garcia has done with this. The $256,000 request will go to the police department. It's going to be earmarked for a number. A lot of it's going to be with the, I believe it goes hand-in-hand with Ezekiel's Safe Street Operations Plan, but it's going to increase the amount of cameras that we have in the street. There are currently four of 28 cameras that are out there that are operating. Most of these cameras that are in existence are old and just are not repairable and not in operation. A couple, most are going to be replaced with new cameras, which really have a higher technology, and a number of different ways will be more useful. There'll be an additional, besides the 28 additional new 10 cameras. Total cameras will be 38. We were provided with a map with the general locations of where these cameras will be. The cameras will be connected to dispatch. They'll be able to monitor, not going to monitor everything, you know, 24/7, but they'll be able to randomly monitor the cameras. They are recording at all times, so if there's a need, the record, recorded video itself can be accessed and brought back for whatever investigation or whatever purpose. The patrol officers will have access to the cameras, and the station will have access to the cameras on an ongoing basis to help out if there are any dispatches or any calls for themselves. Considering the amount of money, considering what will come out of the purchase of this, these cameras, they cost $6,300 apiece. We do, they do buy a weather waterproof box to protect the camera. They're about $400 apiece. The setup of the new cameras is about $6,700. That's only 10 new cameras. The other setups will be used as they are now. And the cost from the gas and electric fiber, to run the fiber up the poles for the cameras, is approximately $56,700. Committee recommends that we adopt the request for transfer.
Good, Counselor. Any questions? Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, under discussion, strongly in support of this for obvious reasons. The city has a crime problem, obviously, I think we all know that, and we need to do everything humanly possible, as I explained at the Finance Committee, to run these criminals the hell out of Holyoke. We're going to watch you. We're going to bring you to justice, every single one of them, as far as I'm concerned, okay? And this provides evidence in order to prosecute these people and put them right where the hell they belong, which is in jail. And I certainly hope HPD will not rest, this administration will not rest, until every single one of these gun-toting criminals is right where the hell they belong, which is up in state prison, all right? The community expects, out of its government, the number one thing it expects out of its government is to be able to walk the streets in safety. Until you have that moment, you do not have community. You do not have a society. You have anarchy. And people live in fear, and it cannot be allowed, okay? So this is the situation. Quite frankly, I didn't bring this up in Finance, but I'm a little disappointed that, but for this, we weren't going to, we had four, only four of these 28 cameras that we had out there were only working? How is that allowed? I never saw a report that said that. Did anybody else here know we had 24 unfunctioning cameras? I mean, that should have been taken care of ages ago, all right? So like anything else, nobody's perfect, but, you know, it's all come to attention, and this thing's getting a spotlight. So I'm glad we're getting that taken care of. I'm excited about the fact we're going to have these cameras at the entries and exits of the community so that when bad person takes a flight, we can identify who these people are. This is just the nature of the beast. And I would say, and I was encouraged also to say, that we will be hopefully seeing that, if necessary, to have additional cameras. If necessary, in areas where people are peddling drugs and doing other nefarious activities, until they realize that it is very extremely uncomfortable and not business-friendly to their commerce of crime, and then they will go either to Springfield, or Chickaby, or Vermont, or wherever the hell they want to go to, but it'll be the hell out of Holyoke. And that is what we need to do, is put a squeeze on these criminals and get them out. And this is a good step to that. Obviously, community policing, all the other things that we're doing, ShotSpotter. It's going to be layer upon layer upon layer of this. It is nice to see that we are taking step two, which is that we did the ShotSpotter. Now we're going to synchronize these cameras to also work in concert with our ShotSpotter program. I'm very excited about that. The citizens demand this. If I heard anything from citizens in this past election is, clean up this city. Clean these criminals the hell out of here. And that's job one, as far as I'm concerned, here in the next term and this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, Mr. President, I just want to take a slightly different take. So, and I'm sorry to sound like a mini historian, but I heard what the Finance Chair said. He's absolutely right. A lot of platitudes go to the mayor, but I just want to point out that getting these amenities for a city obviously requires, you know, financing. And the issue of a cable, a capital stabilization was talked about by a lot of people way before Mayor Garcia took office, and having, you know, Counselor Lisi certainly was a huge advocate for that, too. So I'd be remiss if, sometimes if we don't, you know, have an institutional memory about that. I just, once in a while, I like to mention these things because it's, you know, there's a lot of good work done, and, you know, maybe we can't solve everything because we're not the mayor, but we can certainly raise it time and again, just like we did Pete with One Cabbage Street. You know, if we didn't, if we backed down on that, that was a $10,000 steal, as opposed to getting 30 times that amount and having a reputable investor there. So it's sometimes important for city council to, you know, speak up on things, and, you know, Counselor Lisi did multiple times, and she should be credited. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I have a question. I was hearing the part about HG&E doing, connecting the fiber optics for these, and I was wondering if down the road, if certain things change in different areas, if they will be movable since the technology is more advanced? And I'm hoping maybe the system will be a little bit more flexible than the old one was. And I'm not sure if anybody here right now knows that answer, but I guess I'll just put it out there as a comment, that I hope it could be if it was needed. And I'm really hoping that they will be effective. I mean, we're hearing more and more about illegal guns on our streets and repeat offenders with illegal guns, and I'm really hoping that this really puts a stop to that, because that is, I think, one of the most frightening things going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Izzy Rivera.
I think, for me, which feels like a replay, right? I feel like I've been down this road before, unlike some of the other, some of my colleagues. I actually lived in the neighborhoods where all this stuff was happening. I grew up in the neighborhoods. I unfortunately partook of some of the situations back in the days. I remember when the cameras were first put up in the flats and in South Holyoke and throughout the community, and I remember how much impact it had in the community for the people that actually lived in the community. It did not bring safety, I would say. It did bring a sense of security, but we all knew the cameras weren't working years ago. It's funny to me that people just are learning that now, but a lot of us in the community knew years ago that these cameras have not been working. But that's another note. I think for me is, we continue to go down the road of repeating things that we have tried in the past, and yet we still have this same problem that we keep trying to deal with. It'll be the day that we try to do something different in this community. But I'm here, hopefully I can stay here long enough to see the day that we try a different approach, a more holistic approach that makes more sense, a more preventative approach. But until then, all you're going to hear is my voice trying to speak for community, about community, about the people that are feeling overpoliced in their communities, because this is a war on poverty, not a war on drugs and crime. It's a war on poverty, because the people that are being policed are the people that live in the most impoverished communities of Holyoke. That is the piece. At the end of the day, you can feel how you want to feel. I live in Ward 3 now. The cops do not harass me up there. When I lived in Ward 1 as a little kid, they used to pull me to the side all the time just to have random quote-unquote conversations about gangs. Right. So these are the pieces to me where it's like, I wish we would be taking the approach of investing in after-school programming, in youth programming, and getting kids off the streets, and doing a variety of different issues. But instead, this is where we're at. Just kind of wanted to highlight how I felt about some of this stuff. I don't think that the cameras, that the cameras are bad. I think they will help deter for a time being. But eventually, people will move, and they'll go different places, like a colleague just mentioned. So it would make sense if you could take them down and move them somewhere else. But I don't foresee that being the case. But ultimately, this is what's before us, and these are the steps we're taking, right? Thank you for the time, I guess.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Counselor Bacon's question, we didn't get into it. Unfortunately, the camera is mobile, but what we learned is the hardware is not mobile. So in order to move the camera, we'd have to, we could do hardware elsewhere and then move the cameras around, but, you know, it would be, whether it's costly, cost prohibitive, I'm not sure, but we can find out more, maybe through the chief. I just, I understand a lot of the points Counselor Rivera made, and it's part of the reality of life itself. But cameras are a tool, and it's, I'm not taking away from anything that Counselor Rivera said about community and neighborhoods, and what cameras have an impact on poverty and so forth. But I will say this. The many people who are coming into the city to deal illegal drugs, many people who are buying illegal drugs are not those who live in these communities and neighborhoods. They come from elsewhere. And they know that the dealers take advantage of low-income neighborhoods because it can be more, less conspicuous when they sell their trades, their illegal trades. And the camera is a tool. Is it perfect? It is not. What is nice about this proposal and the map we saw is these 38 cameras are much more spread out than the original 28 cameras, or, and it wasn't 28 in the beginning. I think when Chief Scott brought a handful of cameras in, it was only maybe, maybe four or six cameras that were put up. But they're spread out, and one of the areas that they make sure they want to cover are the gateways coming and going, which I think is important, especially when you see people coming down from Vermont with Vermont license plates, and people coming from other communities into our community. Important to be able to catch and have a video of that particular person or maybe someone leaving, and they're, you know, they're being pursued by the police itself. Not perfect, but it is a tool, and I think when you weigh the pluses and minuses, the pluses outweigh the minuses.
On the motion.
Now, we got a couple more counselors who got to speak here. Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Thank you. Well, born and raised in the city, I've lost a lot of friends to gun violence, and a lot of the crime activity that I saw back in the day was pretty hard to witness. And obviously, it kept getting worse and kept getting worse. And as I witnessed people die in this community, I'm shocked that it took the loss of an unborn child to get this passionate about it, and that at this point, money is not an option. It doesn't matter. Let's just throw money at it. I'm glad that the mayor has come up with this proposal. I am. But I am concerned about if we're, if we're going to spend money on this, right? Invest money into this safe, safe street plan. We need to think about strategically how we go about doing that, and that we benefit from this investment, and not in a negative, with a negative impact. And by that, I mean, first of all, when they did the police audit, there was a lot of things concerning in that audit, and a lot of us read it. We were like, wow, this is, this is what we didn't know, right? There's a lot of things that I'm not going to mention or point things out, but we all know what I'm talking about when we say alerting stuff. But with this plan, should go hand-in-hand, training our officers. Now, I have high respects for the Holyoke Police Department, but training is also important, because when you're in uniform, some people might feel they're superior. I am not taking an aim at any officer whatsoever. It's just a fact, and it doesn't matter which community. We have officers like that. Now, I'm not saying that Holyoke Police Department has officers like that. I'm just saying that that is a fact. So training is very, very, very important. The Police Commission, I believe that's an order that's filed, and I believe it's in ordinance and in DGR, or not DGR.
Charter and rules.
Charter and rules, thank you. Those should be looked at. If, I mean, if we're going to roll out with this, we really need to look at everything at a glance. If we're going to make sure that this is effective, then let's do that. Let's do the right thing. Let's look at every angle of this. Because if we go spending all this, all this money, and I'd hate to say spending because I still see it as a benefit, then it's money down the drain. And Counselor Jordan, you know, when you, when you say money down the drain, we don't like to waste money in the city. So if we're going to do this, then the things I'm mentioning has to work. You have to bring all of these things together, because you're going to send our officer, our officers are going to go into a space where, and they might go in aggressive manner or whatever, we don't know, but how is the community going to respond to that? Okay, this is what's going to happen. It's just going to create lawsuits on the city. It's going to cost us more than this. Possible loss of lives, damages, you name it. So we have to be very careful on how we roll out this safety plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jose Mel Delano Villas.
Thank you, Counselor Tallman. I won't add too much because Counselor Izzy Rivera said everything so perfectly that I have in mind. I'm so grateful that he will still be on the council for the next two years and still have this voice and this lens that a lot of fellow counselors don't really have. You know, the one thing that I want to highlight, and what he said is, this is a war on poverty. Like, you know, we talk about there's a war on crime, and these criminals, and we sort of just paint this photo of these dealers being like the worst people in the world. And some of these dealers were people that grew up in our own community, that were part of our public school systems, that we, as a community, as leaders, have failed them at some point or another to where we are today. I just wanted to add that, you know, I think we all know I'm going to vote for this one tonight. And just, again, grateful that Counselor Izzy Rivera is still here, and that this lens is still going to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, just briefly, of course, my comments tonight are about the camera program. We'll get into the, I haven't, I'm just beginning to scratch the surface as to the whole Ezekiel plan, just like you, and so we'll give that, I'm sure, plenty of scrutiny in Finance, and I know we're both on Finance, so I know we'll, we'll get into the nuances of all that, because it's very multi-dimensional. So look forward to that conversation.
On the motion.
Counselor McGivern.
Just a clarification. I know I brought up Ezekiel's plan and the cameras, and I think it is part of what the plan the mayor has submitted, but I just wanted to point out that this particular project to replace these cameras, we have RFPs and invoices that go back to June and July. This was in the process to do it. The known number of cameras that weren't, that weren't operating, I don't think was something that was broadcast, because sometimes a camera, whether it's operating or not, serves a purpose. But there was no revenue source to pay $256,000 to do this before capitalization or before ARPA monies themselves. We had no, we had no extra money in the past decade to do a lot of these projects, and I think that's one of the reasons that's come forward, because of the revenue source is there, and that's why I did talk about capital stabilization, because it gives us some very good options to do things that we've been not, you know, prioritizing capital outlay projects, you know, is very hard when you have no money. And when you have some money, you can now look at and make a five, 10-year plan for it.
Good points.
On the motion.
I've got one more to speak here. I know it's on the motion, but I.
Well, that's a point of order.
We're getting there, Counselor Rivera. For the last time, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Tallman. I'm really glad you. I'll be honest with you.
All right, brother.
You bring prudility to the council, man. It makes sense.
I try, I'll give you a couple of minutes. I'll start hammering it. You got two minutes. Come on now.
That won't stop me, though, but I'll respect you. Anyways, I think for me, some of the main points are, again, reiterating the fact that, like, you know, some communities that are actually, like, are actually like, I think we should really look into see what other communities that have lower crime rates are doing to, to, to make sure that we have at least a consistent way of things that are being done in communities that are actually have proven to have lower crime rates rather than just shoot from the hip. Because right now, I'm feeling like we're shooting from the hip instead of like actually going through some research and doing some background to make sure how we take our approach with our public safety in this community overall. At the end of the day, again, I reiterate, this has been done before a variety of times, not just in Holyoke, in a variety of different communities. It is so passed today and hopefully it makes the community a smidgen safer, but where does it get us to for the overall end goal? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Now, Counselor Bartley?
I'm ready.
I'm ready. We're all ready.
Roll call for second, pass the second reading.
All in favor?
Second.
Oh, roll call. Okay, here we go. This is for the 256,000 from capital stabilization to capital outlay, other equipment, surveillance equipment.
Mm-hmm.
Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Bartley.
Yes.
Givner.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Maldelano Velez.
No.
McGee.
Absent.
McGivern.
Yes.
Murphy Rambeletti.
Yes.
Puelo.
Yes.
Izzy Rivera.
No.
Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Tallman, yes. Bacon.
Yes.
Two, three, six, 10, 10 yeas, one absent and two nays. By your vote, we have passed that transfer. Ready to take over, Joe?
You're doing so good. I gotta come up.
Class of, Class of 75, Hoyoke Catherine Gales turns it over to Class of 73.
Oh.
Very nice. Great job, guys. Was that age discrimination? Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Tallman.
Nice job, Pete. Nice job.
Just motion suspend. Take 21, 22 as a package that go together, please.
Motion's made. Secondly, we take item 21, 22 as a package. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. 21 is a communication as requested by DGR from Attorney Crystal Barnes. It's in reference to the, the license, Redline License Agreement for Canal Row LLC. 22 is a committee report from Department of Government Relations. To whom was referred in order to City Council approval license agreement between the City of Hoyoke and Canal Row LLC for the use of the portion of a sidewalk located at the intersection of Race and Middle Street for the construction of an ADA compliant ramp. The recommendation is that it be adopted under committee report, Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Thank you, Counselor McGivern. So, we were joined at the Development Government Relations Committee meeting by co-owner Marco Luzariaga and his attorney, Crystal Barnes, for an easement that would allow the, or not an easement, I'm sorry, a lease that would allow the construction of an ADA compliant ramp at their property located at the intersection of Race and Middle Streets. They did initially request an easement, but the Law Department recommended more of a longer-term lease. And this lease would last for 10 years. And as it was mentioned, allow for the construction of an ADA compliant ramp. We got a little bit of an update on what the, the plans are for that, that property, which if you drive by, probably seen some construction going on, but their plans have initially, have changed from the initial project, but they're going forward with a commercial project to create more co-working office spaces for small businesses. There's a huge demand. They're currently full. These are the owners who also own the Qubit and where the culinary, HCC Culinary School is. So there's a huge demand for that. We are excited to see more businesses. And so the, the committee voted that the order be adopted contingent on the proof of insurance that was provided, if everyone got that. So that's my update. Order that.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there any discussion? Counselor Bartley?
Yeah, that was an excellent summary. I just want to just clarify a couple of things. One is, it's a license, this being that we're approving a license.
Thank you.
For a, for this ramp, as it were. And so, City Council has, has authority to approve all, anything to do with real property, lots of the city, including licenses. And second off, the proof of insurance was important because it's in, in their license agreement. They didn't have it, but now it's been presented to us and it indemnifies the City of Hoyoke. And that's really imperative when it, when it comes to these, these types of agreements that we are, we are named, named additional insured. It's highly unlikely anything's going to happen, but you know, we all know the lightning strikes. And then the update, as the Chair noted, was a very positive one. I, I think it's going to be workspace and possibly a restaurant and maybe some other amenities. So it sounds like it's a positive development for, for that area of, of the city. And I'm in full support. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? So on item 21, the motion would just be to receive the, I'm sorry, Counselor Jordan.
I just wanted to point out a couple of points is, you know, I've been actually asking a couple of times, I don't know if it's made it up to the website as of this week, but previously, the ordinance that we adopted on the approving of licenses is still not reflected in MuniCode.
Oh.
So I'm just a little concerned that when, I don't see the ordinance mentioned in the licensing agreement. There's a reference to Chapter 83, Chapter 83, Section 25, which hereby grants to the licensee, but there's no reference in the document, by the way, I provided that this evening, anything to our ordinance. And I'm a little concerned that, like, was our ordinance reviewed to just make sure this is in compliance with the new license ordinance, which isn't that new. It was adopted in 2016. And, you know, I've, I had filed an order previously to, because I'm, you know, very supportive of this. It makes a lot of sense. I was just going to ask one question, which is originally, I think the request was in the original Redline, it was for a two-year license, and now it was extended to 10 years. So I don't, I don't know if there was a reason as to why 10 versus two.
Yeah. Thank you, if I may.
Please.
Okay. We did, that did come up in the discussion. It was, it was more about streamlining the process because they didn't really think that much would end up changing in two years.
Okay.
It just made more sense to go to 10 years.
Okay.
Counselor Jordan, else it?
Uh, kind of. Just that, I, I did want to point out here, I'm just quickly checking MuniCode just to make sure I'm still being accurate. And I don't believe the ordinance is still there yet. So I have a copy of the ordinance, but at home, because I remember we adopted, I sent it to the clerk, but for some reason, this, I would hope though, in the final version, could we just ask before we, we put it contingent on the ordinance being reviewed, though?
Well.
To our vote, like we approve it and just make sure we're in compliance, like, is, is 10, I don't recall back if there was a max cap on the number of, like, the length of time you could give a license. I don't know.
No, definitely not.
Okay. If there isn't, I know there was a 30-day minimum, but I don't, I don't think there was a max, but they should reference that ordinance in the agreement that the city signs.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to, is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to second that motion and then under discussion, then just make it, this agreement has to be contingent upon that being, that ordinance being specifically referenced in this license agreement. I, I'm glad Kevin caught that. I'm sorry I didn't, but it at least was caught. So it, it's a specific license relative to city ordinance, city law. It should be in this, the whole MuniCode thing, Kevin's brought that up multiple times over the, and this is going back to his first swing around here. So for whatever reason, it's not in MuniCode, but it is an ordinance, so it is a law and it should be referenced in the license agreement. Why it's not is anybody's guess. So we can either make it contingent upon that or table it until it's, it's in the written document. I'll defer to the Chair of the, what's the best way.
Okay, just on the amendment, the Chair will require that in writing?
I can do.
Counselor Jordan, that's just one of our rules. I just wanted to get you for once while I was standing up here. You know, know the rules, everybody.
Yeah, know the rules. That's right. Absolutely. All yours.
Um, all right. So the amendment first is that the, the adoption would be contingent upon the ordinance allowing 10 years. Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm just saying, even, yes, 10 years is fine, as long as the ordinance says that's okay. But my point is that the agreement, when it says in here that the license is being granted, subject to Chapter 83, Section 25, that it should also say, consistent with ordinance two dash, whatever it is, it's still not, it hasn't been given a number and it's not recorded in the, on the MuniCode. And I just want to make sure that when we're giving out license agreement, that they're consistent with our current city law. Because that's why we're voting. That was the whole point of the ordinance. They were granting licenses without a vote of the City Council.
They did it once, but we stopped it.
Yeah. It's like most things. They do it once, we stop it, and here we are.
So just as a point of order, Mr. President.
Counselor Bartley.
Uh, well, point of order. I mean, should, can we do that? Can we grant a contingent upon that? Or do we need to table this and see a revised license agreement?
I'm suggesting we could grant a contingent. We, we got to vote on the amendment first. But I'm not sure if we have the Law Department present.
We, we do, yeah.
Attorney Bissonnet is present. If you want to put that in the form of a question to this listener.
Sure. Suspend the rules to allow.
Motion's made. Secondly, suspend the rules to allow Attorney Bissonnet to answer Counselor Bartley's question.
Yeah, Mike, just, just to the Chair, Mike, the, the question would be, well, part A is, we want to make sure that this is in MuniCode. Part B is that the ordinance that we passed, whatever it was eight years ago, is specifically referenced in this license agreement. And part C is, can we take a vote right now that the license agreement before us passed contingent upon that language being specified in the document that we have before us?
Mr. Chairman.
Attorney Bissonnet, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First of all, I checked, asked it, Counselor Jordan. I see no Chapter 83 listed in the ordinances. And honestly, this being my third license agreement since I came on board, it's the first I've heard that an ordinance exists. So I'm grateful that there's a reference to 8325 in, in the agreement. I give credit to Jane, well, probably for that language. But I'm not sure what, what further reference we can make unless I can find that, that particular ordinance somewhere. I haven't seen it before, so that would be helpful. Get a copy of that and make a reference, whatever appropriate language needs to be included in the final agreement.
Well, may I, Mr. President?
Counselor Bartley.
Yeah, just to the Chair. Mike, so the ordinance, just, just take, take my word for it. It, it, it exists, though it's, it's not in MuniCode. But the ordinance does exist and the ordinance says that licenses, just like any other transfers of real property, have to be first approved by majority vote of the City Council. So that ordinance exists. So the question becomes, Mike.
Without the ordinance that's required, Mr. Bartley, and you point that out correctly all the time, that any transfer of real estate interests such as license needs approval of the council.
Well, that wasn't happening, but.
No question about it.
Well, it wasn't, but, but now it is happening. So, but the point is, can we pass this tonight contingent upon that language in our ordinance being inserted into this particular license agreement? Or do we need to table this, get, and have the license agreement revised and represented to us prior to a vote? Want me to say that again?
You have the option of doing either. You can pass it contingent on language being included consistent with the ordinance.
Beautiful.
Or you can table it and then see the revised copy before your vote.
Now, I'll make a motion that we, we pass this, as Mike just said, with inclusion of the language that's consistent with the city ordinance relative to license agreements.
Second.
Okay. So the amendment on the floor is that we do add the contingency of the, the consistency of the city ordinance be added into the license agreement itself. And the amendment is there discussion? Okay. I, I think if I would just take a quick moment, if there's no objection, I understand. I agree. And MuniCode is, I'm just told, will be much quicker. We, I know it's, 2016's a long way ago, but MuniCode with the new software coming in and the way we were doing business is going to be updated a lot quicker. So, but, I mean, I do know that if we pass an ordinance, that speaks for itself. Our vote and the ordinance, the legal language is somewhere, even if we can't find it in the MuniCode code, it's out there. I think.
I have a copy. I'll, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to the Jordan archive and I, I will get it to Attorney Bissonnet. I already gave it to the clerk last year. So, because if you, just to refresh people's memories, I filed an order that all this be updated and I gave her a copy of it, but I'll dig, I'll dig it out and send it to Mike.
And I, and I think in this one, it's, it's a no-brainer. You know, I agree with the amendment, but it's a no-brainer because it's an ADA ramp and I think it's something.
Oh, yeah.
We're all in favor of, for all the right reasons.
Absolutely.
And it's, you know, not unfortunately, but it's needed to allow the, the city and to allow the property owner to do it. So is there any discussion on the amendment? On the amendment first, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. On the license, on the committee report to adopt the license as amended, is there any discussion? Clerk, clerk will call the roll. Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yes, Clerk.
Counselor Bartley.
Yes.
Counselor Givner.
Yes.
Counselor Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Maldelano Velez.
Yes.
Counselor McGee. Counselor McGivern, yes. Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Yes.
Counselor Puelo.
Yes.
Counselor Israel Rivera. Counselor Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Tallman.
Yes.
Counselor Bacon.
Yes.
Passes 11 to, 11 to 2, 11 to 02. And our final item of the night is item 23, also from the Committee on DGR Development Government Relations, to whom was referred in order that the Honorable City Council Accords with Master General Laws 30B and the City of Ordinances for Property Disposition, vote the City of Hoyoke accept the proposal to sell 107 Clemente Street for $34,700 to the Housing Innovations and Programming Incorporated, which is a division of the Hoyoke Housing Authority. Property is described in the city assessor's map as map 02A, Block 03, parcel 002, consisting of approximately 6,534 square feet of vacant land. The property is owned downtown residential and has an assessed value of $34,700. Motion, receive the committee report and adapt?
Yes.
Second.
And seconded, Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Thank you, Counselor McGivern. So we were joined by Matt Mainville, the Executive Director of the Hoyoke Housing Authority. He described the parcel and the project to the committee. As Counselor McGivern mentioned, it's 107 Clemente Street. And the proposal is to purchase this property with an offer of $34,700, $34,700 for parking, green space and amenities for the Boudreaux Apartments that are right abutting it. They estimate construction will start in early 2024, completed in four months, and will cost them approximately $105,000. So we had a discussion. We learned that the proposal was submitted by an entity that is a division of the Housing Authority called the Housing Innovations and Programming Incorporated. This is, this was established to allow the Housing Authority to apply for and receive grants through this, this method and other sources of funding. So the committee voted unanimously that the, that we approve the offer.
Is there any discussion?
Excuse me? Is there any discussion? Counselor Bartley?
Yes, I just want, that was an excellent summary. I just want to add one additional piece to it. The, the entity that is Housing Innovations will be paying the city, I hope, city tax, I wasn't sure if it was residential or commercial, but they will be paying property taxes on that little parcel henceforth. And I want to give certainly credit to, you know, Jamie's doing a real good job for us in procurement and then the, and the way the bid was done. So everybody knew that they had to pay taxes. I didn't particularly love the fact that we're, we're taking a, a lot that was, that could have been developed in, to maybe a duplex or something. But there is a need for it and they are going to pay property tax, so at least.
On the roll call, Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Counselor Bartley?
Yes.
Counselor Givner?
Yes.
Counselor Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Maldelano Velez?
Yes.
Counselor McGee, no longer with us. Counselor McGivern, yes. Counselor Murphy Rambeletti?
Yes.
Counselor Puello?
Yes.
Counselor Israel Rivera?
No longer online.
Counselor Jenny Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Tallman?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
By your vote, you adopted the committee report. If we could go back real quick to item 21, I started to do it and I was reminded I never asked for a motion just to receive 21. It was the communication from Crystal. Motion's made second. We received item 21. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Two quick reminders, real quick, they are important and they are good. Uh, Saturday, 10 o'clock, War Memorial is the annual Veterans Day service. Uh, everybody's invited. Uh, the service starts at 10 o'clock, 9:30 if you want to show up a little bit ear, earlier so we can all march in as a group. Um, there are a number of, uh, different award winners. We do have proclamations for them and our president will be there, from what I'm told, to, uh, give the proclamations. Also, I think everybody received a, uh, invite for a potluck at City Hall. It's at noon time on November 16th. I heard just some incredible dishes coming, uh, to the potluck and, uh, not sure exactly what Counselor Anderson Burgos is baking, but it is going to be great.
I defer to Jeffrey Anderson Burgos.
That's why I said I wasn't sure what you were making. How about my favorite motion?
Motion adjourned.
Motion's made second adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned.
All right.
Thank you, everybody. Great job.